Are there any additions or additions to the agenda this week?
I don't have any.
Any additions or additions? Then we'll move on to public comments. Are there any public comments on the agenda this week? Can you move it on to the next line item minutes for August 28th and also September 11th?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
I'm sorry, I missed the name of the motion.
There. Can you move it on to the claim document?
Motion to approve the claim document.
I would like to see it first. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved. Can you move it on to the balance sheet?
Yeah, I don't have any real new information on the balance sheet. The investments are the same. We'll have to watch. It's hard to look at just one month, but education's been more than gone in. Just a couple months, I think it's somewhere, things like that. And then we've got to study the overall trend and what's happening with the education and operations.
Thank you. Then we can move it on to the 2024 budget evaluation.
Okay. For September 11th, we had the hearing on the budget, the best replacement plan, the capital project plan, and all those items. So now it's after comments from either lack of comments. I'd like to recommend approval of the resolution to adopt the 2024 best replacement plan.
I'll make a motion to adopt that best replacement plan.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion so approved.
I'd like to make a recommendation to pass a resolution to adopt the 2024 capital projects plan.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2024 capital projects plan.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
I'd like to recommend approval to adopt the 2024 budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 budget.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
The next one is resolution to reduce the 2023 rainy day appropriation. The reason that is, you had 500,000 appropriated in 2023. You haven't spent it, but you can't keep that appropriation and then have the same amount of appropriation next year because you take twice the money and you don't have twice the money. So you can reduce this year's because you're not going to need to use it this year. So it will be part of the 2024 budget. Recommend approval of that resolution.
I'll make a motion to reduce the 2023 rainy day appropriations.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'd like to recommend pass a resolution to transfer the amounts from the education fund to the operation fund not to exceed 240,000.
I'll make a motion to transfer that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
After the meeting, I have a case of next decisions. Don't worry.
So next board meeting, schedule calendar.
Yeah. The next, the October board meeting, I'm going to be out of town. It's arguably whether we'd be here for the board or not. So I suggest either October 16th or 17th.
I'm good with either of those dates.
What?
I'm open either one of those dates. 17th would work better for me.
Anyone else have a preference?
I'm good either day.
16th probably is Monday.
Yeah, 17th is a Tuesday, so that'd work better for me.
That'd be great.
The 16th is the line's coming in for the president. So 17th probably is not. If it does break the venue.
Okay, and then in December, the board meeting scheduled for Christmas Day. I'm probably not going to be here. So I would suggest the 18th, 19th, or 12th.
I'm good on the 19th.
19th. Will that work for everybody?
I'm good for 19th.
She probably needs to make a motion officially changed.
Do I have a motion by the?
I'll make a motion to approve the October, December board meetings be changed. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
6:00 PM still?
Yes.
Can you move it on to personnel?
Okay. It's okay. I have the rules all together. Assistant girls basketball coach, Bill Druck. Seventh and eighth grade boys basketball coach, Matt Welson. And fifth and sixth grade basketball coach, Will Pryor. Recommend approval of that.
I'll make a motion to approve all three.
I'll second that motion for all three.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
The next one, approval of the staff evaluation plan. It's the same as the plan last year, but the state says we had that made submitted. So we get board approval for staff evaluation plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff evaluation plan. I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'll add the same thing on the teacher appreciation grant policy. We're going to have to be highly effective or effective to be eligible for that, but we have to update that. I recommend approval of that.
I'll make a motion to approve the teacher or staff appreciation.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
The elementary school improvement plan has to be annually adopted. Brian, do you have any comments on that?
We're in the second year of a three-year plan, so we made some small revisions to it, but still the same plan as last year. We just had to update some scoring things that are in there. So we're in the second year of a three-year plan.
I'll make a motion to approve the elementary school improvement plan.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
High school school improvement plan, the same thing recommended. Brian, any same deal?
Same deal. I'll make a motion to approve the junior, senior high school improvement plan.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Can you move it on to across the building?
Would you like to hear from the?
Yeah, if you guys want to.
Everybody, I sent the proposal.
Yeah.
Mr. Krimmons had the wrong address on Thursday, so I recentered on Friday. Did everybody get it properly?
Yeah, we did, yes.
Okay. All right. You want me to go over just kind of the highlights of that? Is anybody have any questions?
Currently, if you would, I just kind of know where you for the board, it'd be great.
Can we do it?
Yes, please.
Well, kind of the highlights is we want to reform on 501(c), a nonprofit that's community focused. That's going to be the entity that's going to control the building. You know, things like adult education, children's daycare, special needs classes, life skills, try to get some trade school in there, things like that. But community focus is what we're looking at. We're also truly volunteer to dedicate some historical objects to the building so we can have some space dedicated to local history. So that's one thing. But we're also interested in being able to use the gymnasium for daycare and special needs kids when that school's not using, if that's possible, to use it at those times. But we're looking at kind of like splitting the area, the land between the gym and the high school. And then we would take everything north of that. So we have the school and what the playground is now and all the land north of the ground. And then that east side, the east door is a handicap entry door, and that was for the special needs. So we needed that access to that. We're also, if you notice the funding, what we fund this project, we're looking for, we know we have probably allocated money for demolition costs if that was going to be a requirement during the demolition of the building. And we wanted to allocate a portion of that to fund this project so we could get a jump start on these nonprofit programs to redevelop some, modernize the building, bring it up to code and certain things. And also use the money for matching grants for grants, the need, matching grants for the nonprofit program. So we have money available to match these grants. And that's what we're looking at. What kind of money are you thinking? They really don't have anything budgeted for. Well, we had a number, and we don't know how accurate this is, $700,000 to demolish the building. I don't know if you guys have heard that. Have you had it praised by anybody?
No.
No.
Yeah, we've actually never had a discussion about demolition of the building.
Well, we're actually having somebody look at it. And we don't have that fixed number yet, but if we, that's if tri-township's on the hook to demolish that building and they're going to have to spend $700,000 to demolish the building, we'd like them to reallocate some of that money to the nonprofit so we can get this program on track.
Yeah, see Jim, that's, I think that was a big rumor out there, but we as a board never ever discussed demolishing the building.
But the board's going to have to do something with it.
Eventually.
So you're, I mean, you're paying, you're paying bills every month on that building sitting there, and it's not being used. So you have an expense there. And if you don't use it for anything, it's going to have to be demolished. You know, you can't just let it sit there, be vandalized, and go to ruin. Anyway, that's our proposal. And we are going to get a better, hard number for demolition just to give us idea of what that number would be. But we know there's asbestos in the malls. They're going to have to get rid of the foundation, all the brick out. I mean, there's a lot of expense in taking down a three-story brick building and cleaning it up.
There's a lot to talk about.
Pardon?
I said there's definitely a lot to talk about because there's things we've discussed at a high level that this is, that's why we want to make sure the community had a ability to have conversations about it, make sure we're doing the best to serve across and also make sure we're looking at our budgets. As Mr. Krimmons said, we don't have any allocations there other than taking money away from other funds allocated or in this current school operations. So we have to find a right way to balance all that.
This is one idea we came up with. I mean, we're looking for, we'd love somebody else to come in, offer you guys a bunch of money, take it over, do something with it. This was the only thing we came up with. We looked at it as a business idea and couldn't figure out how to make it work for a business. So we thought, you know, we came up with a nonprofit, but that's probably the best way to utilize the building and actually something good for the community. So when he first told me about the idea, I had a little shock. And it took me a while to digest it. And after a while thinking about it, I'm like, this makes sense. And it may not make sense to you guys at any point, but I thought that was a ridiculous idea at first. But the more we talked about it, the more we looked into it, long-term it made sense. Like you said, you're going to have ongoing maintenance and repairs. And eventually, I mean, it could maybe 10 years down the road, but if it's not occupied, not used, not maintained, it's going to have to be knocked down. Or it's just going to be bare-like and kids are going to start breaking in. It's going to be messy. This is just one idea. We're looking for any other community or board ideas. This is just our first proposal.
And we went to community involved. It's going to just be a community project, so we went to community involved, the whole thing.
No, it's definitely, I would think the board would agree that some of the plan for all of this, we can find a good purpose that can keep us across alive and make sure we utilize the industry there and finding the right balance there without impacting the day-to-day that we have for everyone.
We did find a lot of people interested in using part of the building for different things like that, for daycare and special needs, things like that, adult education. So all community-based. And that's, a lot of the funding is available for nonprofits like that. It's a community project, community-based. So I mean, yeah, we're open for any ideas that you guys have and kick around it. But it's not uncommon for that, for the demolition funds to be allocated to the nonprofit. That happens. That happens for the nonprofit.
Thank you for putting the time into it thus far. I mean, there's a lot of conversations ahead, but I'm sure you put a lot of time and effort into it.
Sit down with you anytime, kick around ideas.
Maybe you're aware, because you've been around a while, isn't there something about where schools, if they have a piece of property that they're not going to use anymore, that there's a window of time where they can sell it to another educational or nonprofit for a dollar?
I think they already went through that.
They did that.
You already looked into that?
I don't, yeah, I don't want the school to go. You guys all know my feeling on it. I'd like to see the school stay, but I understand Jim, what you're saying as well.
I understand you guys are using the gym. But the rest of the building, it is almost like the teachers and the school board have just walked away and abandoned. I mean, the place is trash. There is so much stuff still in there that the school's responsible for doing something with. You guys are, I mean, it's still your property.
I mean, basically, right now, it's being used for storage. I mean, storage is the way. There's no other use for it.
That's a kind way to put it. It was last time you took a look over there since they moved out. It's a mess. And like the Shilys were saying, kids are going to start vandalizing and getting into things. And whether it's your property or the town's property or private property, something needs to be done. And that just, I mean, it's the same with your yard. If you leave it unattended and there's trash in it, people are going to think you don't care. Your property might get vandalized, your house too.
I did raise a copy. If anybody here wants a copy, kind of what we proposed, if they want to see it.
Thank you for your time. Can you move it on to the construction consideration?
Okay, you've been talking about potential construction with the 3.2 million dollar bond issued sometime now from different cross sellers. You have a spreadsheet at the starting point of what some of it. The more I think about it, I believe right now, I would recommend that you not include the windows in the design build portion. Till we get more information, just that's a big number not to really know what much time to do. And if you do this bond, you have three years to spend the money on the project, which you identified Wintons as one of the projects. It would not have to be in the PSI portion, just like the roof is not going to be in PSI. It's going to be bid out separately. May end up going that way with the windows, but we need a lot more detail of what, you know, several hundred thousand cost of the windows should be, I think. But I think there was pretty good agreement on the toilet room renovations, intermediate primary and the locker room renovations down at the cross, and the new track and the roof repair. We got a little bit of roof repair in the last week when there was a leak. So we got that taken care of. The rest of it, I would recommend a contingency bill to get more definition of what's happening. But if you're going to do the bond issue, you need to live on it pretty soon so DLGF can work on it. It's figured in next year's budget, but it won't be if you don't go ahead and unfold it.
Sure.
Well, basically, about that recommendation, does the board have an in the contingency of being allocated from the windows to contingency dollars? Do I have a motion by the board for the continuing of the bond issue? Would the, for the change, is the recommendations? Or is there a table for further conversation?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All board favor, one opposed? Motion approved. To move on to the technicals report.
Back in August, I came across you guys about our iRead and iLearn scores. And so at the beginning of the school year, our middle school staff started looking at our iLearn scores and then our NWEA scores, our testing that we do, our practice monitoring that we do throughout the year, three times a year, we looked at our initial results. And we have right now, it's called SRT Student Resource Time. It's from 12:30 to 1:00 each day. And so the first three weeks, it was more the kids just building relationships with their teacher that they had. And then in the last couple, the first couple of weeks of September, the teachers and I started grouping the kids based off of their English and math levels, some needing remediation, some needing enrichment. And so we created five groups of the kids now rotate. They're with one teacher for a whole entire week, and then they rotate to a new teacher during that time. We're going to do that for the next 10 weeks. So Mrs. Vanebonte is helping with our ELA classes. Mrs. Berg, our math teacher, is doing the math help. Ms. Boren is doing silent reading. She's our teacher. They're doing silent reading for 30 minutes for all five days that they're with her. Study has shown that kids should be reading 60 minutes a day. So Mr. Wells is our new science teacher. Kids get along with him really well. One of the things that he noticed was that some kids lacked a lot of confidence in themselves. So he's doing some more growth mindset things and activities with the kids throughout the week. And then Mr. Porter, our social studies teacher, is doing social emotional learning. So we will go all the way through. They'll see each teacher twice over the 10 weeks. We'll go all the way up until, I think, two weeks before Christmas break. And then the teachers are playing some activities for the kid to do some fun activities those last two weeks. So we're hoping to see some improvement in our star reading scores and our reading score and then also in our NWA scores. We take it again, write before Christmas break. So we'll have that information ready for us. Also, we started some iLearn training this month. We had our kickoff meeting with Michelle Gru from NISAC. And so our ELA and math teachers for the junior high were there as well. So there's some changes coming with iLearn, so we want to jump ahead on that. So that was our first of 10 sessions that we'll have with her over the next four to five months. We were well represented at Scirco Festival this weekend. We had a cheerleading float placed third. We had musicians that performed on Sunday on the main stage and did a wonderful job. They had a concert last Thursday that went really well, junior high and high school. We usually don't have one this early. Usually it's October. We had it pushed into September. So a lot of junior high kids who have been playing for four or five weeks together, but it sounded really good. So that was a good night. We had staff walk in the parade again this year, and our 5K run, 3K walk race our athletic department puts on went a lot smoother this year than the first year that we had it. So learned some things that first year. So already have some ideas for next year, things that we want to do. The new hoops that we approved back, I think, in May or June, they were supposed to have a September, their appointment in September. Talked to the gentleman that put them in. We're on a wait till fall break because they need a full week, and it was the best time for us to have no activities in the gym. So they'll come that week of fall breaks, the October 17th, 16th, 17th, they'll be here that week to throw all that in. And then one other update, something that was brought to my attention at the end of last school year. The old fight song for Wontal was Notre Dame. The fight song for lacrosse was Illinois Fight Song. If you try to replace tri-township in lacrosse, the syllables don't match up. So just trying to change even just the words a little bit, we have not been able to do that. So I know our cheerleaders are chomping at the bit for us to have a school song that they can play at every home game. So my, I guess my question to you is, I feel like this shouldn't be a Mr. McMahon decision. I think there's two, I think it's an important thing to some people. And so I guess my question is, should I form a committee and who should be on that committee? If you guys have any ideas? So I mean, we can look at it, and I can form it with some kids too. But if you know of some people that you feel like, hey, they might want to be a part of that or here from anybody?
Please let me know. Maybe, yeah.
There's a lot of history there that would, sure, a committee would be good to have a conversation.
My personal feeling is it's a new school corporation. It should be something new. You know, you have people from both sides that are going to be upset, so maybe you should get people from both sides together.
So that will be one of the things I'll try to get done this month. Not done, but going in the right direction. So I do feel like they probably would like it before basketball season starts.
Sure.
That's a tough one.
But yeah, so. And I talked to some of the kids today, and they said, well, we're not Wontal, we're lacrosse anymore. We're tri-township. And I said, I get that. So I mean, that's who they are.
So what are the kids' minds?
That's what, I say, let me the question I asked. I mean, I talked to, I talked to a few today, so I didn't, I talked to two or three out of a hundred and sixty at two lunches, so I think it's just a conversation that we'll have to have.
I, I think the kids should be proud of it, because they're the ones that have to wear it. I mean, I'm not the alumni in most schools, so, but that's my personal opinion, so.
I would agree with Chad, I think it should be the kids' choice. Because we've learned, no matter what we do, we can't make everyone happy. But I also understand the alumnis, but I think the kids... This is new, you know, so it's a new process.
So some, I feel like if they did one change from the midges to the racers, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Let all these kids, like, let all the kids vote on something, you know, pick something out, and then take your top three or whatever it is, if you come close to it, and then just have a good vote on it.
That sounds like a good idea.
That's a great idea.
I didn't want to date myself, but that felt like Saved by the Bell.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
During homecoming, there could be like an homage where the, the two old songs are sung, you know, then that would help alumni, but whatever goes forward is the new group.
That's good. I do, I think the kids deserve that.
They're the ones that gotta serve you.
And live with it.
My personal feeling is, let's, you know, give them, try to make someone pass for it too. It's been sitting, still too long still, it's time to get off your bad fad, you know? That's my personal thing. I think gives them that idea. So they also have to live with the rest of their life, taking whatever's worth, that's my personal opinion.
That'd be a good project for you to...
Didn't quite get rid of that, did you?
Might be a student council thing.
Thank you.
Just keep it on the mercy of the trucks, will you?
That is all, thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent.
Okay, a pole building update, we are moving forward. It's a whole lot more complicated than we may have thought. We do have a survey now, because we have to have a survey before we can get the state permits. I have two different electrical contractors working on proposals for the electrical, of course, you can imagine, electrical is pretty well maxed out out there, so it's probably gonna take a new service. We got two different contractors working on proposals for H D A C. Gas lines, a long ways from there, is a possibility of tying into this, the school's service into that. But we're making progress. By this Thursday, we have to appropriate at least a hundred thousand for that asset money. We will get that done, and we're shooting to expand a hundred thousand by December fifteenth. The building income will be done by then, but we gotta have all these things together before they will issue a permit. And we have, got lined up to demolish the building, we got lined up to do excavating, we have that stuff, proposals for that. Probably in the near future, there's probably, Brian kind of volunteered, I think volunteered, I'll be forcing, but he's gonna be available for maybe a Friday, Saturday for community, if they want any desk out of that or anything to take in. Bunch of the other stuff's gonna just go away. They will take the heaters out of the wall, so there's probably some auction value in those, because they're not that old. But a lot of that stuff, there's not much auction value in old desk. But if someone may want one, that's great if they do. So probably watch, Tiger Paw's will probably be a good place to watch an announcement on that, because there's gonna be a time where if you want a desk, it is coming. There's different sizes, but it's pretty full of stuff. Okay, projected enrollment, it does look like we're gonna be down slightly, you know, that's a major concern for all of us, I think. I am going to start a kind of a listening tour with all the employees, I've been here a few weeks, and board members too, I'm gonna ask them, what you, you feel the strengths are, the weaknesses, what you vision five years down the road, suggestions for improvement, and not really a discussion, I just wanted to hear what people are thinking. But I think we have to, like you said, we have to move forward, you know, make this thing fly. At the school board convention, a couple of things I went today was about community engagement and district communication, because I know we're, we're gonna talk to some marketing people, and Mrs. Stills is gonna get involved, because that's the name of the game now, either you grow and market, and some, the school's gonna have to decide what they want to stand for and what you wanna market, and then make a commitment to that, but it's, it's a process, but we gotta get started. So that's, that's in the works. That's all I have right now.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just wanna let you know how humbled I am that you allowed me to go.
Oh.
Um, I learned a lot, so a lot of good information. So I wanna thank you and the board for letting me go to that.
The trick's enough to have a board meeting, not if, you're not asking.
Yeah.
That's the way it works. That's all I have.
Just nothing further than that for Jeremy.
I'm making a motion.
High school baseball fund.
How's it zero? I turned in the check for forty-three hundred and some odd dollars this summer from the travel terms, it was supposed to go to baseball fund. Motion approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting October seventeenth. Ooh, look at it under.